Meeting to order. We have a quorum established and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, public input, doesn't look like we have anybody here. I'll move on to number five, approve agenda and changes to the agenda. We do have one change. We'll be removing, approving of the March minutes. We'll move that to the action items. We have one change there. I'll accept the motion to approve that change.
I'll move. Move by Schoenfelder. Second by Paul to approve the agenda with changes. Any other discussion? If you don't know, say it.
Aye.
Second, or Paul's same side? Motion carried.
Number six, conflict of interest, none that I'm aware of. Number seven, we will approve the consent agenda, which consists of approving claims, approving the Associated School Board of South Dakota Health Insurance Pool Participation Agreement, approve the health insurance pool renewal rate agreement, approve the worker compensation pool participation agreement, approve the worker compensation pool renewal rate agreement, approve contracts, and accept resignations. Any questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
So move. I'll second. Move by Schoenfelder, second by Paul, and to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion?
Craig, on the health pools.
Those renewals, yeah.
I'm just curious. What category did we get put in?
The tranche?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Two?
It was two percent.
There was five tranches.
There was five, one through five.
They went one percent increments this year. Why? I don't know, but one through five and we fell into the
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we were in the middle one or
So we basically got a two percent increase. Which wasn't three, wasn't four, wasn't five, so.
The last nine-year average has been two percent.
For the pool.
Okay, just curious.
It wasn't only a surprise because I think Craig and I were both expecting
Yeah.
Something a little bit different than that, so, yeah.
Might be next year, who knows? Timing. Any other? Here down off, say I?
Aye.
Paul's same side? Motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. First item is review of policy manual. Following ASBSD policies are
Information reports first.
Oh, skipped that, sorry. Number eight, sorry, high school principal report.
Busy, busy times right now. Look back from the last meeting to now, quite a bit going on, quite a bit about to go on, so I'll try and get through it as quick as I can. I'll start with the most recent. We have prom last Saturday, a couple days ago, went really well. Good food, good fun, proud of the kids. They participated fully throughout the whole three-hour prom. Did a great job, were very well behaved. Couldn't ask any more of the kids. Kudos to Mrs. Mehdi. She put on a great prom. She led in the junior class. Even though she had some kids that were gone on decoration day, they were coming in even a week in advance to make sure that they did their job and got it set up. So I thought prom went off out of hitch. Good job. And then also thanks to Brian and the janitors for cleaning up too. It was a mess. I gave up at 12:30 on Saturday night, went home and took Brian. When I came back on Monday, he looked great. I think Brian spent a lot of time on his Sunday, so thank you to Mr. Ben Scooter as well. State testing's been going on for about a little more than a week now. On our end, we test in grade six, seven, eight, and then you test in grade 11. Last week, we started with the English and some with the math. Don't want to really try and give them two tests in a day, so it kind of depended on how you can make it work. But we've gotten through the majority of the English, math, and about halfway through the science. We're doing well. Seems like effort's pretty good, so it's been good so far. We administered our first ACT in-house in a long time. Thank you, Mr. Agrew, for taking the lead on that. Did that two Saturdays ago. Had 10 of our students take the ACT here. You know, that kind of is part of us kind of getting ready for, as we've talked about, next year. There is no more smarter balanced test for 11th graders, it's the ACT. And so kind of getting them used to doing that. Now, next year, our entire junior class will be taking the ACT. Kind of found out through webinar at the state in the last week that there's quite a few changes to the ACT as well. Like the ACT is, we've known it for years and years and years. There's some little tweaks they're doing to it. For example, like, I'm a math guy, the math test has always been 60 questions in 60 minutes. And they've changed it to 45 questions in 50 minutes. They made changes to the English and the reading as well, made the reading portion smaller, a little bit easier to digest. So they've done a bunch of studies. The numbers will still be in the same and they think that it still relates, so you'd still get a score one through 36. The composite score where they say like, you know, I got a 25 on the ACT or whatever it be, that's now just going to be from your reading, your English, and your math. Doesn't include the science anymore. There'll be a STEM score that is the math and the science put together, but that big composite where you say a kid got this, your science doesn't go into that anymore. So there's some interesting changes. We also found out from the state that next year, like every kid's going to not only take the Big Four test, but also take the writing component as well. So it'll be our job on our end to really sit down as a staff, and we're going to start that on Thursday at our in-service, and start to talk about what we want to do to make sure that as this test becomes the state test, that we're ready for it and we put our best foot forward from the word go. So got a lot of work to do on our end, but we're looking forward to it.
And obviously, Mr. Knippen, that'll be free then for all the junior
Yep, state pays for it, so that's cool. So yeah, that's a nice thing is, you know, and you can take it more than once. Only that one initial test will be the one that goes for state reporting. If a kid wants to do it later, that's on them. But actually, testing gets moved up a little bit. Like, we have to be done testing next year by April 2nd. I think they probably want to do that once so that, you know, all of our state tests, then, because you've got to figure there's people that got to, for example, grade the writing portion. Well, now they still have that April test window that opens on the 5th. We'll have to be done and out by then. And a kid could retake it right away. You know, say we take our ACT in mid-March, they could turn around and take it again in April and get two back-to-back and maybe get a good score out of one of those too, so it'd be pretty good. And also reminder too, on this Thursday morning, our freshmen and sophomores are taking the pre-ACT. We invested in what's called the pre-ACT, and so now we'll have three years of data, freshman, sophomore, junior, that kind of build and we understand how the kids are going to probably fare and in ways to improve, we'll get some feedback. So a lot of good things happening going in terms of the type of assessment data we're going to have and how we can use that to move what we teach and how we teach it, so, yeah, looking forward to it. We're right in the middle in terms of our programs and stuff like that. State convention season is what I'd call it. Two weeks ago, we had state FFA. Last Thursday, Friday, we had HOSA. And state FDLA is gone today and tomorrow. And then we got Easter break, and then right after Easter break, we got state FCC LA. So you've got a lot of state conventions where some kids are gone for a day or two, but also very proud of how we've done. I'll give you some just quick results here. Like state FFA, for example. Lots and lots of places. We have four teams that placed in the top 10 in the state for their CDE section. Horse evaluation got second, nursery and landscape got second, floor culture got third, and agronomy got seventh. Those are pretty competitive areas and did well. Individuals, Tony Anke got third place overall in horse evaluation. Drew Braley got fourth in nursery, Elliot Leishner got fifth in nursery, Kyle Wells got 10th in nursery, and Emily Wells got eighth in floor culture. Lots of other ones got in the top 20 as well. And we had five seniors that got their state degree, which is a pretty big accomplishment. Five seniors that got the state degree this year were Drew Braley, Elliot Leishner, Taylor Fink, Brecken Culbert, and Emily Wallace. So proud of them, and I thought they did a great job overall. Thank you to Ms. Ackerman. I know the FFA season's kind of a grind, so I know she's probably happy that it's over with, but have you seen how much time those kids put in before and after? There's usually FFAT teams practicing starting at like 7:15 in the morning, so a lot of good work. And they'll have their banquet pretty quick to kind of tie a bow on that. You know, HOSA's pretty new. We had the HOSA crew come in, I think that was last month. But HOSA's gotten really big in a real big hurry. I don't even remember being around when I would have been in high school, not that that was yesterday, that was a while ago too. But like, for example, this, there was over 1,000 students competing at state HOSA this last weekend in Sioux Falls. You have like, there's basically two rounds. You have a first round, and if you get through the first round, there's a second round. Like the first round's a test, based on how you do on the test, then you go to like the skill set, and then you get placed. So to place is quite the ordeal, and we did pretty well. Like, for example, I'm going to pass these out right here. These are a couple of research posters that Lexi Schoenfelder and Finley Boganreath put together. They got first and second in the state in their research poster category, which is pretty cool. Lexi Schoenfelder got first, she'd be the blue one. You know, Lexi tore her ACL first game of the year, and so she used her experience and kind of put it into a research project and put a thing there and won. So pretty cool, a little silver lining for her. And Finley got second right behind her, I think. Finley's was about, uh, where did that go? What's that?
I think it was long-term care.
Significant factors contributing to falls in long-term care facilities. Factors can be lessened.
Yeah, so I mean, proud of those girls, first and second. Must have given you guys the I don't know, a lot of the sheep has got the rest of the places, I'm sorry, but there's a lot of other places. You know, the group of girls that came and talked to you about nursing, they placed in the top four in the state as well with that project, so good for them. And like I said, if you see the results, they're in the daily data. Did really, really well. So with that said, almost done, I promise. Registration of schedules, that's kind of the next thing that we're getting done here. We've been working and tweaking the daily schedule. I think we're going to go back to SRB every other day. We've kind of had a 40-minute one every single day. One of the big issues, unintended consequences of opening up another block, was really, really had a challenge in filling that in the middle school level with enough electives. We just don't quite have enough space in our schedule to offer the electives needed. And also, kids have kind of given some feedback, about 40 minutes, not be enough time to make up tests, make up labs, which is some of the stuff we've got to do. Instead, what we're going to kind of pivot to is kind of what I'd call like a 20-minute advisory block. We're going to do some character development. The state is going to, they have this program that's called Bring Your A Game. And talks about setting A soft skills, for example, attendance, accountability, appearance. Those are a few of the A words. These are things that you try and develop in your students, and so we're going to kind of roll that out. So we're going to take our 40-minute SRB that was daily and make it about 20 minutes and do some character development and as well as some ACT and smarter balanced prep in that 20-minute window. And then every other day, we will have a full block SRB. So making some tweaks and some changes. There'll be some other things that go along with it. If you're ever real curious, you can stop by and I'll explain all the reasoning and rationale, but but it put a lot of time and thought and effort into it. We've even kind of kicked around the idea about possibly even adjusting the start time of school because of where lunch falls and how it works, so instead of going 8:15 to 3:05, there's the potential of possibly going 8:25 to 3:15 and ending at the same time as the younger kids, you know, the younger kids end at 3:15 right now. And we could use some of that earlier time with things like marching band in the fall, FFA practices, as well as, you know, teachers are in the building from 8:00 to 8:25. It's amazing how quickly the kids clear out at the end of the day, but in that 8:00 to 8:25 window, could we get some students to come in and get some extra help and stuff like that? So there's some reasonings behind it, and I'll present that schedule to you next month after I have a few more conversations and get it rolling. In the meantime, right now, the last kind of piece is working on the master schedule for next week. Now that we've kind of started out some things with some of the positions that were open, I'm going to get the master schedule finished up, and then we're going to roll out class registration. So students will be registering for classes in the very, very near future and kind of roll from there. So only other thing I can think of that had talked about, we had our National Honor Society induction last Wednesday. Thank you, this is the last of Mrs. Schnabel for taking the lead in National Honor Society. We moved that into the day, so it happened during SRB. I think it's always kind of cool for all the kids in grades six through 12 to see the ones that have earned that honor and then kind of understand and realize what it takes to get there. Hopefully leads to some conversation. So like I said, it was busy, busy times in the six or 12 world. Do you have any questions for me?
We had our first FFAT competition here. How did you think that went?
Yeah, I kind of forgot to talk about that. I thought it went great. For me, it's kind of neat to finally see it in action. Like, you send these kids out the door time and time again to see all the different competitions that take place, or at least most of them. Some of them are offsite. Pretty great. We had over 550 kids in the building. It worked really well. They're well behaved. It seems like we're about the third or fourth competition of the year, so they know the drill. And a lot of kudos to Ms. Ackerman and many, many community members that all kind of helped make that thing go. That was pretty cool. So definitely something that as long as Ms. Ackerman and Mrs. Roeth are willing to take the lead in organizing it, I think hosting it is pretty good.
I think it's sustainable. I mean, my going through there, peeking in at everything and seeing where the host site with the armory full of kids and stuff, which it was, I mean, for as many kids that were in the building, I don't know. We didn't have to chase anybody from here, there, or anywhere. I mean, the kids were in the gym, it was mild-mannered, it was pretty laid back. I mean, for kids that were outside of our system, right, I mean, I didn't see any angst with any of it, quite honestly, and it ran really smooth, from what I've been told. And I know some other people from different schools, and they thought for a very first time it was so I don't know why we wouldn't continue with the opportunity, so.
You know, if we could figure out a way to get the one, the one
We had to go to the
Competition that, well, the horse thing, even those ones, the one that had to go to Mitchell. You know, we probably would have been done and out of here by 1:30 if we weren't waiting for, I think it was mechanics or electrical. What's that?
It was me and Andrew.
Yeah, you know, that group having to go to Mitchell and back. I think a lot of the groups were waiting for that one. So if we could find a host for that here in town, maybe you guys have some ideas after watching it for the day as to where we could host that here, then I think we really have something. But a lot of positive feedback, definitely a good thing. I think it was good for our kids to get to kind of show off a little bit, so very cool.
Are the teachers vying in on the block schedule changes?
No, I think it was, you know, we had a good discussion about it. They were the first ones, you know, that kind of rolled it out too and kind of understanding why. And some of the other changes that have been along with it, I think they're pretty respective too of the idea of the advisory block and going with that, so. Also, I guess we can talk about, one thing we're going to try that, it used to be when there was SRB was in the morning. We'd move SRB to the end of the day. So the idea there being with all of these absences and all of the early outs, you know, baseball, softball, volleyball, basketball, football, all throughout the year. By having every other day where SRB at the end, maybe you'd lose less instructional time, hopefully. So we're going to try and move that SRB to the end of the day. So that's another thing we're hoping to get out of it. You know, you always look for positives, negatives, unintended consequences. We've got some good intentions with what we're trying, so, yeah, they've been on board, I think, though.
It's a little bit of a double-edged sword, having lived that. Mr. Knippen and I have talked several times about this concept, but with that comes probably going to have to draw a line in the sand and really impress upon our kids the expectation of what the SRB at the end of the day is. Because I put it unnoticed right now. The last thing we're going to tolerate is these kids thinking that they're not doing anything and study hall, I don't need to be here, and mom and dad are going to call me in and excuse me. Not going to happen. So they're going to get locked in, but I've seen it happen. I've done that, I've lived that, and unintended consequences. But as long as you help the kids understand what the expectation is, nip it in the bud before it even starts to become a problem, then it won't become a problem, so.
And there would hopefully, we'd even discuss the idea of some rewards of like, if you're at the A and V honor, if you're staying off the missing list, maybe the last SRB of the week or every other week, we'd maybe let them go at say 2:45, an extra half hour early out. It's almost like a reward system sort of speed. And then the ones that are struggling can stay and get a little bit of extra help, but we'll see. Those are all things we're kind of kicking around. There's a lot of ideas we have. We'll just see which ones stick and which ones work.
Are Lexi and Finley's projects going to be, or can they be posted anywhere? I'd like to actually read through them sometime.
Yeah, we could definitely, we'd put those on the flyers. I think we could probably put on the website. I'll make sure Mrs. Bartels. And I believe since they got first and second, I think they get to go to nationals, I think. I can't remember who did this, so. They'll get to take those things to the next level, but yeah, I'll post those. It's going to be pretty neat. Definitely can send them out through email. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I don't have as much to report as Mr. Knippen. But I'll start with the elementary end of things. We are also, we're getting ready for state testing. Our fifth graders started last week on Monday and did the science portion. And then we're going to get rolling with our third, fourth graders, and then fifth graders as well. We'll be starting their ELA tomorrow. So we're going to do two days of testing this week, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then next week we'll do two days as well. So we're excited about that. I think the kids have been working hard, teachers. That's kind of been our last couple of weeks here, is really gearing up for that, preparing kids, kind of reviewing, looking at what test questions might look like, spending some time with that, and some of the resources we have available to us from the state. And so that's kind of what we've been really heavy into the last couple of weeks here and getting ready for. Along with that, you know, we're just kind of into that phase where we're starting to think about next year with our different classes and what that's going to look like as far as, you know, teachers thinking about how kids will transition to the next grade. And so they're starting to think about the breakdown of what that's going to look like, so we're having those conversations. We're talking curriculum and what that's looking like. We're talking schedules, different things like that. So those are the things that are being talked about. From a music perspective, we had a concert on last Tuesday, which went really well, was our fourth through sixth grade music performance. So it was fun to see the band in that, which has really grown, and really to see the work that Ms. Anderson and Ms. Fink have really put into that, along with our student teacher, Ms. McLeod. They've done an excellent job. Really been impressed with the growth of our musicians in the band, and it's fun to see a lot of numbers with that, so that was really fun to see. And then we had the choir portion as well, and the choir is doing amazing work as kind of the past couple of years have shown as well. And with that, just the Friday before that, they were at a contest in armor, had a lot of success there. So it's good to see that the work they're putting into it, because I feel like our teachers are really pushing them, and now they're seeing the results pay off in contest form. So that's been really fun to see, and kudos to the teachers and the students for their efforts in that. Transitioning over to activities, we hosted a track meet last Tuesday. Went pretty well. It was our first time in a long time hosting the Early Bird Meet in April, so that was kind of fun to be able to bring in teams and kind of get things going right away. Think it ran pretty smoothly. We had members from the community helping out at different events. So thank you to everybody that took part in that. Ethan brought down a few members to help at this year's track meet, which was very much appreciated. And so it really felt like the whole co-op working together to put on a good meet, which was excellent. And the kids did well. I think our boys and girls won the track meet itself, and so it was fun to see all the kids out there competing and doing their thing with that. Softball's underway, and so they're going. Golf has started. We're getting ready. We'll actually host our golf meet here next weekend. The 25th is the Friday that we'll be hosting that. So all the spring sports are underway, and things are going pretty well there. Also wanted to update you guys, I went to the state athletic directors conference. That was kind of that last day while it was April 1st through, it was three days, first, second, and third out in Chamberlain. And so that was a good opportunity to get out there and network with some ADs. I'm doing some work on the strategic planning committee for the state. And so we're working on kind of reimagining what the work is that we need to do from a activity standpoint. And so that's been good to collaborate with ADs and be a part of that. Wanted to update you guys that, you know, one of the big things that was discussed was baseball and whether or not that's going to be coming. It sounds like it's probably two years away. I don't think they would push that on us and say that it's going to have to, it's going to be sanctioned by next year. I don't see that. But it was a big point of conversation, you know, and some of the things that were brought up about the difficulty of the schools taking it on, or the state, I guess you would say, sanctioning it would be, when you look at the club model right now, it's working pretty well. We're getting a lot of kids participating, but we found out that in the metro areas, they're charging a lot of money to participate on the club team. And so that's one of the things that might be driving this a little bit, because otherwise, it seems like it's working pretty well. And from a school standpoint, if it gets handed over to us right now, because it's club, they play a lot of games on Wednesdays and Sundays. And so from a school perspective, we couldn't play games on Sundays, and the only way we could make a Wednesday work is if we started early in the afternoon, so we were done in time for church. So thinking about if the schools take it on, what does that do for our schedule? Well, you would have to probably put it on, put games on the same dates as track meets, and now you're having kids choose, which with schools our size and smaller, you know, you get yourself in, kind of makes it tough for kids, which is not the intended circumstance. So those are some of the discussions there, but it was a good conference, picked up some good things. Talked about emergency action plans, and that's something that I've been working on throughout the fall and winter, and talked with Mr. Em and got some feedback, but there was a session on that. And so one of the things that they encouraged us to do is to get, run that past the board so that you guys are all aware of it, and that we have buy-in, and I can get feedback from you guys on different things. So that's something throughout the summer that I'm going to be working on to bring to you guys, to show you. I feel like we have a pretty good plan in place. They wanted to see something about how to handle heat exhaustion, and that's not anything that I had on our plan, so that's something I'll get added to that. A lot of the other stuff in the past have been about AEDs and the use of that. And so that was a big point of emphasis on the plan that I had created, and now we'll add that, which talks about just having access to basically a water tank with ice in it so that kids can cool down in a hurry. That's the best way to do it, so. More to come on that, but those were some of the things that were discussed. I just wanted to share that with you guys. I think, hopefully, that's everything.
Is there any discussion, baseball, about is it going to be in the spring, or are they going to try and extend it into summer like it should be?
Yeah, well, there are two proposals out there about the season as well. And so one of them would just be doing kind of what softball does. It'd be, you know, start in the spring and end kind of that first part maybe of June or end of May. The other one would be to start in May and probably play through June, and like your state tournament would probably come right up against 4th of July. So kind of two different things that they're looking at. Didn't get too much into that at this point yet, which is interesting, but they talked more about the other. So actually, they're out with those. So two options there that are being proposed, so. Any questions for me?
Great, thanks, guys.
Okay, Mr. Knippen.
I put the, I just got a final recap again. The legislative session, some bills that affect or impact education, so I put those in your packet. Don't spend a lot of time, but some interesting ones. Senate Bill 71, we've now reduced the dropout age essentially, or withdrawal from school to 18 to 17. Senate Bill 74 requires that during an official local school board meeting, you guys need to have a review of the open meeting laws. So that's something we'll probably put within our reorganization meeting in July, and will have be a document in there, and we'll probably have a little, you know, sharing session as to what it means to have open meetings and the policy and the procedures that are expected of board members during that concept. House Bill 1040 reduced the state's contribution to the dual credit programs for upperclassmen, 11th and 12th graders. And the new price point on that, I believe, rose from about $50 per credit to like $72 per credit, about 240 bucks for a three-credit class. So it was still a pretty good bargain when you look at the cost of college credits now that when you go on campus. And the biggest one to highlight in your packet, it was interesting, I listened to the news tonight. I usually don't get to do that on board nights because of the timing of it, but heard Paul, Mayor Tenhaken from Sioux Falls, gave his state of the city address, and a lot of his time was spent on Senate Bill 216 and this top property tax bill and the reform that's going to go on there. And they estimated Sioux Falls that in 10 years' time, they'll lose about $25 million in revenue because of this new property tax bill structure. And if it's going to impact a city budget, it's going to impact a school budget as well. Essentially, what you're doing there is you're going to cap growth, and your assessed valuations are going to be limited as to what they can generate in a tax base. And there's a lot of different moving parts to that, but just understanding that moving forward, if this is something that does not get changed, right now, it's supposed to be sunsetted or actually implemented in 2027, so perhaps something will come out of next year's legislative session that people maybe will take a different angle on this or take a different approach, and, you know, this, it may be, it may, they might get out of the starting gate before somebody beats it up and goes a different direction with it. But right now, it does, it's going to have an impact on it's going to have an impact on us if it doesn't change. Because our, our growth too will be capped in our general fund. And it'll also be capped in our capital outlay fund as well. So, that's really about it. I mean, there's several others there. But these are kind of the highlights of some of those Senate education bills and how they impacted us. So, that's all I have. So.
Okay. We will now move on to our discussion items. First item, A, is to review policy manual. Following ASBSD policies are being presented for review and a first reading for district consideration. GBE, GBEB, GBEB dash R1, GBEC, GBG.
Pretty straightforward policies. I don't see anything there that I offer to you guys for any changes or recommendations to, for you guys to consider. I mean, just talking about health, staff health and safety, employee communicable diseases, which after reading through that, it never dawned, I mean, it dawned on me, but I didn't really take consideration that, you know, if we have some staff here, I just told you guys that there's a breakout over in Andy's area about whooping cough, you know, what if we have a plethora of staff come down with a particular health illness or, you know, there seems to be an infection going on as to what the protocol there is where staff is concerned. So, we do have policy on that. Same with the following after that, the use of drugs, alcohol, controlled substances. That's more of a staff component on that. And then, participation in political activities. And then, our own involvement as a district in political activities. So, really pretty straightforward stuff. So, I've just, you know, it's your first reading of that information. No proposed changes at this point in time. So.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to B. Following ASBSD policies are being presented for review and a second reading for district consideration. GBCA, GBCB, GBCBA, GBCBA, A, GBCBB.
We reviewed those last month. There are no changes to them for last. So, just your second reading based on your policy. So, truly all you need at this point.
Okay. Move on to letter C. Following ASBSD policies are being presented for final review and adoption and inclusion to the district's policy manual. GA, GB, GBA, GBA, A, and GBC. If there are no questions, I will accept the motion to approve.
Move back to our chairman, I turn here to approve the following ASBSD policies. GA, GB, GBA, GB, AA, and GBC. Any other discussion? Hearing non-nominal consent.
Okay. Discussion item D. We order to give capital outlay plan update.
Um, I, I put a, a document in there. Just kind of highlighted, typed up a little synopsis there. Projected ideas of what we're looking at as far as the totality of all these little things. So, um, you have your playground improvements. Um, that was basically budgeted for last year. And I do, we had some money set aside for that. But the rest of that stuff, you know, we got acoustic ceiling tiles, you know, door magnets for our armory doors. And some of these are guest estimations. I'm working with Dan Bamer from Ethan Coop Lumber to see if he could come up with something from years past about a rendition of a maintenance facility that was, I think, presented at one point in time. He said he'd have to do some digging and go back into their CAD program. He thought for sure he could find it. But that was just at the end of last week. So, I have yet to hear back from Dan on that. Rest of those options there, you can see a vehicle, 15 passenger van, um, we could take a look at, you know, estimation there about 45. That's what we, I think we paid 40 for the last one, Craig, probably.
No, we paid 50, 49.
49, wasn't it?
And that had 50,000 miles on it. So.
Might be a little more than that. So, maybe we can wheel a deal and find a bargain on that. I believe that's something that we would, Craig and I visited about. We'd really like to run up the flagpole this year is to invest in another one of them if we could.
Probably a low rise one, not a high rise one.
Yeah. We do have maybe one or two seven passenger vans that we can maybe do some wheeling and dealing on that. Perhaps it don't get used as much anymore to kind of take a little bit of the bite out of that. So, just a thought idea there. So, mower tractor unit, still working with Hanky repair on that. It's something I think we would like to take a hard look at as well. We have two mowers as of yet. One has a broom, one has a snow blower in the winter time. But one of them is, I think it's the Ferris, I think, or the Snapper. I can't remember which one is.
It was like 2000, it's 15 years old.
Yeah, it's got some.
I think is what it was.
It's, 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 it's running, but I'm, I'm not sure how much longer it's going to run. So, take a hard look at that too. And then the last items, we talked about last time, you know, we, just to highlight a, a track surface repair and repaint, storing away 12.5 a year on that. Same with the outdoor facility, another 12.5 on that. Going to meet with National Guard members tomorrow about doing some professional, or excuse me, conversion of our DDN room over here in the armory, off the armory area for some professional development space. So, I have a little bit more information update on that. You know, that number there could range anywhere from 5 to 20, quite honestly. And I don't know. I need to, we meet with those guys first. So, I just wanted to let you know that. I really would like to take the commons bathrooms there and put some cabinetry in there. We did that two years ago to our girls and boys bathrooms in the high school. And that has held up really well. And it's, it's aesthetically more appealing. It's pleasing. It's easier to clean. So, I'm going to work with Austin down at the lumberyard to see if we can't come up with that concept. And if he can't, then perhaps I maybe reach out to somebody a little bit local. The built-in sink is what is, is, makes it easy. So, you don't have a drop in. You don't have something from the bottom. I mean, it makes it a much more viable, durable product as well. And the landscaping around the new facility, I did reach out to, just so you're aware, I reached out to Pitts. And I said, no, I know it's a long shot, but any way that we could have a conversation about the landscaping that was supposedly done. And it was done in the middle of October last year. So, we hydro seeded everything that was dirt. And I mean, you know, what kind of, we're not going to get a stand on that. I'm telling you, there's nothing there. So, right now we got mud. So, I'd like to get that addressed as soon as possible. But if that's something that Pitts isn't willing to maybe help support, I guess, and trying to get maybe us down, back down here and maybe do it again. Or maybe if they just reseed it, drill it in, I don't know. I'm at least having a conversation with those guys. Because I think I, you know, at the timing of it, it wasn't great. And maybe they think they did due diligence with that. And it's our problem, I guess. That, that's worst case scenario. But I think I could work with Mark Beebeus, perhaps maybe on our own, at a reasonable cost for him to come down and redo some of that stuff. Maybe not hydro seed, but at least, you know, drilling it in. And but same thing, we have no moisture out there as far as, you know, in-ground systems and things like that. I mean, we'd have to be intentional about trying to get some moisture on it to see if it'll take. So, just so you're aware of that. And then parking lot repairs. I found that apparatus I put in your packet there, kind of a goofy looking thing. And I talked to the guy and he was, you go, I've never, nobody's ever asked me that question before. He said, that's a great question. He said, it would definitely work. He said, but the only thing I can tell you, it's made for typically hot mix, you know, and it's a, it's an oil-based product. And it goes through there. He said, if you can get a viscosity with that, you know, if you're talking about epoxy and cement sealer or crack sealer, he said, it would work. He said, but I just don't know if you're going to find the right type of product. So, if you're, anybody knows of a cement repair patch or cement product that's got some liquidity to it, and then it'll run through this little port and can use in one of those things, I'd be all ears. I mean, to take a look at, trying to find that. I've done some research and I've looked a lot of places. And it all has this, it's either a pre-made mix. You got to mix yourself. And then it's got really consistent, you know, setup to it, you know, where it's just, it doesn't have the viscosity to run through a machine like that. And the last thing I'm going to do going out there is just bend over with a cotton gun and fill every crack. I mean, that'll take a month of Sundays and plus then some too. Probably a year or some days to get that done. But I know it needs to be done. We've talked about those seed, those cracks out in the parking lot for sure, a couple of years now. So, we really need to get something. We could do it, but you know, main thing is if we wanted to, there's all kinds of hot mix out there, you know, but we really don't want it to look like a jigsaw puzzle out there too aesthetically. I think it's much more appealing to put the, you know, the epoxy, the cement sealer in there. But if you know something, anybody out there knows something about a product that will, it's got some, I don't know, water texture to it that'll run, we could certainly listen to that conversation. So. And then the other couple of things there, just some folding chairs. We got to do some replacement. Athletic uniform rotation. I'm not even sure who's in that. But totality there, you're looking at just over 300,000. And that's on top of what we typically do. We know we got a $565,000 payment now with the new facility and our capital outlay certificates. And then, you know, we're asking last year about 1.3, we, our levy, whatever levy we ask for generates about 1.3. So, we have to do all of this. No, I think once we get a little more pricing down on a few of these things, we can hone in on exactly which ones we want to do. So, unless there's questions, ideas, thoughts.
How do we turn out on that sewer re-lining?
Yep. So, I didn't go forward with the extra, probably 100 plus feet coming back to the south. I talked to, the last time I talked to the SD lining guys, as long as we're not having problems, and I think we're through the heart of the seasons now where it's been a lot of heavy use. I mean, back in the, in the, the early fall and, you know, winter times. So, that would be something too, we would have to potentially take a look at as far as we know what the costs are on that. If that's something we wanted to budget for. I did not put that on the, on the list though. And I know for a fact we'd have to dig another hole. The hole would cost anywhere from about 25 to 3 grand. And only because it's too far to scale. It's too far to push the scale from one end to the other to the holes that exist. We'd have to pop another hole in the floor somewhere. So, but if we wanted to do that to make sure, we've gotten through it, you know, as of late. But you, you know for a fact, cause I saw it on camera too, that you have 100 plus feet yet that's cast iron and it's not in good shape. So, but I can certainly take a look at that. I know what it costs. I mean, he charges 165 bucks a foot and then it's 2,600 bucks to dig a hole. So, we're going, we want to budget for it. We can do that too. Craig, I don't know, you and I really got a chance to look at those, those concepts and the dollar amounts. And anything to add to what we're looking at or we?
In general, the, the total cost so far, I think of the sewer thing was about 45,000.
Yeah. About the overall costs of presented here on that sheet. I mean, knowing what we got to do and what we ask for within our capital outlay request, you know, come the fall of the year. Are we out of our bounds? We're in our bounds. We got to do some cost cutting. I mean, what do we got to do here? Too much? Not enough? I think the playground, if we took that chunk out, cause I think a lot of that stuff is that we, have we not made those payments? I believe we had to, we had to offer at least half of that upfront in order to place the order, if you recall. Pretty sure, pretty sure we wrote a check somewhere north of, I want to say about 70. And don't forget, and I mean, we're going to, the costs that are associated with that, those two apparatuses that are going to be installed out there, you know, they were already at, at cost. So, if it was an $80,000 unit, you know, there was 40 of it on us. Same with the other one. And it was just half and half. So.
Sorry, I can't get into accounting.
That's fine.
It's an update and.
Yeah. But just a reminder here, you know, we have to do all the prep work out there. And I've met with New Elm, I've met with Mike Wolf, and I've met with the National Guard, Lee Gregerson. And I think from a team aspect there, yes, there's going to be some costs associated with the preparation of that site. But I really think it's going to be cost-effective because Lee's going to offer the National Guard unit, uh, skid loader out there. And he said he's got a couple of bodies he can even put in it for some AT stuff. The guy's got to do some manual training. Mike has commandeered another outfit from C and B or another piece of equipment. And he said, I'll run that. He said, I'll put her in the drain tile with my own backhoe, you know, roll him a little bit. But I think he's going to be very reasonable on his time. And then New Elm's coming to take the old out. The trade-off there was they get the, the equipment. And then we did talk to them about running some, uh, side dumps in order to excavate all that and, and take it out. And then perhaps bring in the P rock. And, you know, they were well, more than willing to do that. And again, you know, they were looking at more of an hourly rate, not knowing how much loads were coming out of there. So, even with that case, those guys, they all told me they can get that done in a day, less than a day. If we move in two skid loaders and side dump, you know, the excavation of that will be done in a relatively short amount of time. So, I think all of that stuff would be, come in under, at a price that I think is very reasonable for us. So. And then those guys, I got them scheduled coming in June 16th, if I remember right. Cause I just talked to that guy last week. And he wanted to put us on the calendar. And that's what I gave him. And he said, I got you down. So, they're coming in and they'll start building. So.
The one thing I will add, that, you know, you said 318 there. The things that are not on here that we still pay out of capital outlays, the textbook rotations. And then we also budget X amount of dollars, both the high school end and the elementary end for replacement, you know, desks, chairs, whatever, maybe their requisitions from the teachers, things like that, that are not included in this 318. I just don't want anybody to get the misconception of the payments are only 500,000. And now we're only spending 318. Why are we going to 1.3? This is just the extra projects.
These are the, what I call summer projects, I guess.
Yes. Does that help? That's what I want to point out.
Okay. Any questions?
The, on the van, so like, I don't know how many kids are like in these FBLA, FCC. I mean, will that?
FBLA took it, I believe.
So, if we had two vans, would that decrease our busing quite a bit? So.
Um, junior high, you got to have two drivers then.
Sure.
Two school employees to drive. That'd be the only thing.
Sure.
But yeah. But the only bad part about it is like overnight stays in that 15 passenger van. You can't fit 15 people in there and their luggage. No way.
Sure. But if we have two, I guess is my question.
Yes. But I'm just saying, there's no room for any luggage in those things.
You're not paying sit time.
Yeah.
You're not paying.
You will save money.
Three.
Sure.
80 a mile. You're hit.
Right.
There's, you're exactly right, Scott, that there is some underlying approaches to that where there's going to be some realized cost savings instead of taking a bus, even if you're taking two.
I think that cost is going to be closer to 60 there. So, north of 60, I think.
That's if we want brand new.
Well, no, brand new ones are 90. Cause I got that quote.
Well, I found three of them online already for 40.
Used ones, how many miles? This was, ours already has over 100.
Less than 60.
Right about 80, 90,000.
I found three of them for less than 60. Less than 60,000 for less, right at 40. So.
Sure.
We might have to go get them. I didn't, I didn't.
I'm just going by what.
I didn't say they were in our backyard.
Bridge sent us from that one. Was like.
Yeah, that was a break. I'm not doing that. That was insane. Did my three buses for that bridge.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to item E, discuss Clarkston, Ethan Cooperative Financial Agreements. The school board will discuss. Are these presented for financial agreements for each cooperative sport?
Don't have anything to share with you on paper, but Mr. Brunin, Mr. Hawkins, myself and Mary Byer, we'd be Craig's equal up at Ethan. We met here, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. And we sat for a couple of hours. And we hashed over every sport, every cooperative. We came up with some approaches to what we thought was reasonable and how to do this sport by sport. It was, found it nearly impossible to write a one size fits all, you know, between the two cooperatives, between the two schools, because of the number of cooperatives in the sports are just so vastly different. So, we haven't, we got to, I got to type it up yet and put it on paper, put it all in one agreement. But I think the, the general synopsis there in agreement with Ethan and Tim and Mary who came down, I think we're going to do 50-50 approach on a couple of the sports. Craig kind of wrote, highlighted some of that stuff.
Yeah, 50-50 was like softball, cross country and track. And that's kind of what we've been doing already. One thing they were going to go to their board, if I remember, I'd talk about, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Evans. They were going to look at, take into their board, maybe supplying some dollars to the reservicing of the track.
Yes.
Possibly. So, they were going to be talking about that as well. Then for the wrestling and gymnastics was going to be more on a percentage of. Then for the wrestling and gymnastics was gonna be more on a percentage of participants basis and taking the gymnastics deals, and if there's four from Hanson and three from Parkinson and two from Ethan, it would be split based on your percentage of the...
The total cost.
Yeah.
And same, same with the wrestling approach too.
Yeah, because that's kind of what we did now when we came up with the dollar amount back in the day. But the problem is that was back in the day, so rather than just leaving that flat dollar amount, I mean, they contributed one or two kids, was it, out of 26? It was still a thousand dollars a piece if we went by, our budget last year was about 26,000.
Think we talked about a minimum too, you have to pay at least this much.
Yeah, around a thousand dollars is what they were thinking on that there, is what I remember Mr. Hawkins saying there.
But we're in a, I think we're, we feel better, we're in a better spot, we had a conversation, we put it on paper. I mean, so some of the things even within the survey that we looked at, I think a lot more accountability is gonna come out of that, especially with the bigger cost items like perhaps the resurfacing of the track. And we talked about the equipment that perhaps, you know, pole vaults or, you know, high jump pits, you know, all the other costs, we got some ideas and how to account for that and we're there accountable for that as well. And they agreed on those concepts, so, I mean, well, once we get it all on paper here, my plan for you guys, just so you're aware, the timing of this is gonna be probably in the June meeting, because at the same time at the June meeting, the, the question still lingers as to what's gonna happen with this track and cross-country cooperative. And if we're gonna go independent and become Class B, both schools and do their own thing, or if we're gonna hold this cooperative together, and that'll come along with that decision as well. So if it's in the event that it stays together, then we'll have that stuff in place for review. And if we end up going different directions, then, you know, some of this stuff becomes a mute point, so. Kind of where we're at right now.
Okay, any questions? All right, we will move on to action items. First action item there is to approve the minutes with changes, and Craig has the board meeting.
Yeah, it was just one, I forgot, I missed Matt last year, he was not here. I had him as absent up top, but one of the voting still had his name in there, so I gotta change that, take that out and do that. So just need a motion to approve the minutes from the last regular board meeting with that change.
So move.
Move by Sean Feller, second by Pro, any other discussion? Hearing none on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried.
Move on to action item A, approve the financial, approve the financial report.
I have not, in the general fund, I've been, I have not done a title reimbursement yet. I've done one, just to make sure my people were right, the first one, but you know, the state gets mad when we don't do monthly, but we don't do monthly to try to get our lowest cash balance of the year, that's one of those two months. But they do not approve of that at the state level, but a lot of people do do that. But that'll be coming, I didn't get it done in time for the April 10th, I did the federal reimbursements for school lunch, but not that one. So that could be the reason why it's maybe down a little bit from March of last year. I may have had that first one kind of done there. I did not go back and check yet, but I'm thinking that may be why. Capital outlays still looking good because consider we got second half taxes coming in yet. So when you're talking about looking at those projects and things like that, I mean, the funds are there, I think. Even if we look at a building, that's the reason why, you know, the shed or whatever, we're gonna have north of a million dollars in there over that are done by the present balance after the project. Special education is a little low, but that was because we did have those last summer deals and we don't have as many expenditures, but it is lower than it's probably ever, you know, been in the last five years right now. That's the reason why there's those out-of-district placements for that one. Food service is kind of going down. Enterprise fund, that's negative right now due to, you know, the things in there, remember, our driver's ed. And the big thing that is making it negative is the preschool until the end of the year and then we make a transfer from the general fund to, to make that portion of the enterprise fund equal there, pay for it out of there to transfer. Any other questions you guys have that you see?
So if our qualifications on how we qualify for special education doesn't get us funding, do we have to, do we have to come out of the general funding?
That's a good question. Not necessarily. There's a couple of things that would have to happen there in special education, it's a different beast. Obviously you levy for that.
Right.
First and foremost, that you have to go to the max on the levy if you can afford the program. So whatever you have within your program, if you run short on dollars, first and foremost, you gotta make sure you're levying to the max. So that's what you'd have to do by law in order to do that. And then even at that point, if you levied to the max and you still weren't able to generate enough resources in order to pay for the program, then you have the opportunity to go what is called the extraordinary cost fund. And there is a fund of somewhere between four and five million dollars every year sitting in the state of South Dakota where you make an application and you're one of two things, you're either a high-cost student that has put you in that condition, or it's a high-cost program that's put you in that condition that you cannot make ends meet financially. So we're a long ways away from ever having to do that, even though perhaps our fund, our, our balances within our spent program maybe fluctuate a little bit. The main thing that we have to be responsible for, Craig and I, mostly Craig, but we have to make sure that we're doing maintenance of effort. Special Ed is a program where you cannot just take a hit and save a bunch of money because you lost some kids or you moved a teacher or anything like that. Bottom line is, because it's embedded in public law, 94142 at the federal level, there are certain things you have to do, and that's one of them. We cannot reduce our costs in special ed. We can, but you have to have some pretty good solid reasons and valid reasons as to why your costs went down, rather than maintaining, that's why they call it maintenance of effort in that respect.
The out-of-district placement, the place, losing a situation like that is one thing that allows you to...
Have a reduction.
So we're thinking, we're, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, with those losses of those students at that time, those ones from last summer, I think it'll start going back and we can decrease our costs and have, because we did levy at the max last year, 1.4888.
Okay.
So we were at that.
But there's, there's some safeguards in place there if you ever get, I, I don't know neither until I came here. I mean, my 16 years in Mount Vernon, we went to Action R and they cost fun every year. I was broke, I mean, it was just, I didn't care. I mean, spend, not spending money nilly-willy, but placing kids here and there, it didn't matter, didn't have the money anyway. I mean, didn't hurt us and that was, we were the max, we just couldn't generate enough in the local tax funds in order to pay for the costs of what we had and the kids that we were educating. So stuff like that, I don't know, I mean, it's part of what you do. It's not a scary situation for me because I lived with it for so long. I didn't know there was a different way you could actually do that. I came here and many of these things like food service and your sped, you actually, you got money in there. I'm like, I don't know, I've never heard of that. I never heard you have money in food service, never heard you had money in special ed, because I never had any.
It's not a whole, there's only a handful set up the money in the food service.
So, but yes, it's, there's options, there's opportunity there, we'll be okay, so.
Any other questions? Not any, a motion to approve.
So move.
Move by Pro and second by Turner, any other discussion? Hearing none on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Okay, we will move on to action item B, approve student transportation agreement with Kandy Bussey.
Put the contract in your, we just got this, it was hot off the presses. And I'm not sure which one we put in there, because we got three different of them, quite honestly. There was a little bit of a trickle-down theory there where Craig did, so I said, "Check the math on this." He shook the math, he said, "No, I don't think it's right," so we went back. But in section three, it says travel by each, but within six, it should be $17.60 for each hour of...
Yeah, not 17.80, yep.
So, and then I think the rest of the dollars did match out, but essentially they gave us a 2% increase, which really pretty good, I think some of the districts in which they serve, from what we've been told that so far we're the lawman on the totem pole, which is really pretty good. So the total cost, I think, from one year to the next, we're looking at just about 6,800.
Something like that, yep.
Just shy of $7,000 increase, which, I mean, it's pretty, I don't know, it's reasonable, I guess is the right term.
It went up 7, yeah, 7 cents per mile and then 35 cents per hour further over time and that, yeah, so. That was the 2%.
But I would propose that you sign the contract for now, but it's something that we get discussed. Last time, John, you asked the question about, okay, what does it really cost for us maybe to take a look at this and do something on our own, other than the human resources, that's the biggest concern, is finding enough drivers to put in the seats. Mr. Roth can attest to that today, because I think his, he was in one again today, only because he couldn't plant. So I appreciate his help with that, but, you know, what would it, what would it cost to get into the business, I guess, and do it on our, on our own? You know, I had, I did some research on a couple of busing sites and I didn't talk to our local people as far as bus companies, but, you know, right now they're saying, "Hey, bus, if you want something that's 10 years old and you're less than 60,000 to 80,000 miles, you're gonna be north of 50 grand a bus on it." And that's what I did research on, that's what I talked to the guy, he said, and I looked up, did some comparatives with the two local companies that do, and we, I found some that are a little bit less than that. I mean, I think local maybe has something to do with that, but even at that stage, if you're gonna get into something 10 years old and it's got less than 60,000 on it, I did find a couple around here that were for about half, so about 25, 30 grand a piece. But you're gonna, we would have to have eight, you'd have to have eight buses. We have five routes and then you got one for spare and then you got one that you do for activities.
There's a lot of two activities going on.
Yeah, and there were, sometimes we're two on the road, so, and that would be tight. You know, we haven't done any research on somebody local as far as, you know, doing the service and the maintenance on those things. And, you know, I'm not afraid to get them inspected and doing those things, I did that all my years up in Mount Vernon. But I'm pretty sure there's a couple of local vendors here that we could talk to about, you know, getting a contract with them to do our service and our maintenance and, you know, making sure they can pass inspection and things like that. That's, that's really not that difficult of a concept. The hardest thing would be is to whose plate does it fall on? And typically, probably mine, because that's all I've ever been used to, is making sure that people are, guys certified to do it and getting them the training to get certified and then making sure that we got five route drivers morning, noon and night in order to get people from point A to point B. So can you pull it off for less than 500,000? I think you could, plus the fact that it's gonna save you. I mean, right now we're paying, we budgeted 350 in this fiscal year.
Looking at only, probably spending about 340, 342, somewhere around that.
Yeah, so I mean, to me, your expenditure, anyone given years for that, but I know we could do it less for that. I honestly believe we could do it less for that. Because what they're charging, if you look at that one sheet in there, what they were charging for field, you just saw some of their cost savings and what they made on some of that stuff. And this is two years ago from when BJ Bussey was doing it, but it wasn't like they were make, they weren't making money, because they were. You know, so I think we could save some money if we did it, but, I mean, if you tell me to do it and we go look at it and we create a package and we go talk to, you know, Foreman about perhaps, if they're even willing to, to sell the facility out there and would they sell us a few buses to get started with on top of it, who knows? You can only ask, what they can do is say no, you know, and it's not trying to burn any bridges with them, you know, have a conversation with those guys and see what they say and, you know, but... I know I can drive to Rapid City and back for less than five grand, I know I can. I'm sorry, I can. And I don't care where you go, I know if you owned your own, you can do it for less than that. So I don't know, something to think about, I guess, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but if we really wanna get in the nitty-gritty with them, I think it's a conversation we need to start getting serious about with them, so in a year's time, we have our ducks in a row, perhaps, get it done. If needs more serious research on total cost, exact cost, then we can do that as well, so. It's kind of 10,000 view, our foot view right now for you, so.
And you just can't wait till April of next year, just to...
This, I'm, I'm...
No, I know, but I mean, that's, it's kind of been what we've, every time it comes up, it's about this time and then... We did this work and we just, you know, it is what it is either way, but yeah, finding the drivers is gonna be the toughest.
Do you think that would be the biggest hitch, is just finding personnel?
Me, having lived in it my whole life, yeah, I mean, my whole career, it's, it's about people. I was one of the first guys within the geographical region, I was paying over 100 bucks a day. This was 20 years ago, it was unheard of, but that's what I had to do to find somebody to do it.
Do you think it would provide any opportunities for any of the existing staff to add to their salaries? I know we don't wanna have the teachers out of classrooms, you know, morning and night, but one or the other, is that a, is that a standard procedure?
I would say you find a lot of school districts that they have staff, whether they're coaches, whether they're teachers, whatever it is, they're driving routes, especially in your smaller Class B schools. David did the guy, I mean, let's use our neighbor to the north, Mr. Hawkins, last year. Mr. Hawkins drove a route all of last year, as well as being superintendent and elementary principal. Why? Because he had to, and it didn't matter much money he threw at somebody, nobody would do that job.
Even Foreman's, the one school I talked to, I think they had three routes and two of them were school employees.
Is it an opportunity? Absolutely, man. But what do you do to convince them to take advantage of that opportunity? And there's gotta be some latitude on our part.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, because right now we don't have, we don't really, very limited, you know, let me do that, so.
Yeah, so when mom comes in angry bear and the kid's flunking his class and he wants to talk to the teacher and she wants, she wants a piece of him, where's he at? He's on the bus route.
But I know Bearford does it too, because one of our ex-employees drove bus for them down there. They used to be, one of our employees here, he's made money, but they, and they own their own, so it's possible.
And it's not like we've twisted a bunch of arms. And I, but I think it has to be, if we do something like that, we have to have some serious conversation with some, you know, our staff members as a whole, you know, you need to really consider this, you know, type of deal. I mean, I mean, you guys have been generous enough to allow Craig to do what he's doing, you know, I never heard him complain about it, I think there's days he'd rather not, but, you know, based on what it comes to it, but... And there is some incentive there too, I mean, it's, he's not doing it for free, you know, and people frown upon that. Well, you're letting him double dip, huh? Yeah, well, he wouldn't have the job of the business manager if he didn't have a school, he didn't have kids to get him there, so, and same with me, I mean, I'm supposed to be driving a bus tomorrow, so.
So is this, this 59,000 or 60,000, is that, is that the, what we're figuring this difference on what we being charged and what we think we could do it, or am I misfiguring?
At that time, that was the guess, that was the guesstimate.
Yes.
And the guesstimate question marks, you know, the, the bottom ones there, the, you know, the route cost and the route revenue, I mean, that was pretty easy to figure out and calculate. The ones that are not easy to figure out and calculate is the total cost for oil changes. And, you know, the fuel was pretty easy because tickets and, I've just picked the average mileage of a bus, about six miles to the gallon and figured it out based on the number of, of miles we drove in a year.
And how many gallons you use.
Yep, yep, but down at the bottom there, the other cost, the insurance. I did do some research a while back and then, at that time, that was before this even, with Ethan, because they own their own, they're not much more per bus than a vehicle like a van.
It's not that bad.
It's a little bit more, but not like you, it's not double or anything like that, like a van costs us 800 bucks for the year. It was a little... It was a little over a thousand back then at that time.
Sure.
Now what it is now, I haven't rechecked for probably three years. So that one's a questionable one. And then of course the repairs was a big one. I mean, you don't, no.
And that administrative component, that was hiring, that was having like that bus manager position, which
Yep.
Technically, I don't, you know, you could probably get away with not having that. But there again, who's going to wear that hat?
Or a, or a park, bus park custodial.
There's ways to pair it up.
Yeah, pair it up. Maintenance, whatever you want to call it. But that was, those numbers were the, yeah, are they right or not? I don't know at the time. And even, and I thought it went pretty high, I think with those. So with that at the time, that was the profit after that.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I'm just speaking for myself. I don't know if it would hurt to at least have a conversation.
Yeah.
And, and not, not necessarily say that's what we're going to do.
Right.
But see if they have any interest in selling anything.
Right.
They have eight buses now themselves here?
No.
There's seven.
Seven. There's two stalls empty, but there's still today. And there's nine stalls out there. So I only got seven.
May I offer anything?
No, go ahead.
Like today I drove the bus. There was 15 kids on the bus. Once I left town, dropped three off in town. So is it necessary to have?
I've already asked this question.
That big a bus?
Oh, that big a bus. Okay.
I mean, can we buy with?
Some schools are go, like the schools that do it on their own, one, they buy mini buses because they can't find drivers. You do not need the CDL to drive the minibus. So that is what some of the smaller schools do.
They even did a few more routes, say you did six or seven mini buses instead of doing five big buses that you don't need any CDLs, but you'll have to have a couple of big buses, of course, for activities and stuff.
It's the town kids, man. I drop off 29 kids that one day.
I was just wondering, maybe you can have one minibus that's just town route. You do a couple laps, you know, it'd be done in less time than any rural route would be. And the rural routes could forget dropping off in town. You just have one minibus do all the town routes. It would be done. I mean, sometimes I have to sit here at the school and watch the kids for a few minutes while they do a lap in town.
What I thought you were going to ask was, do we need to use buses? And yes, we do need to use buses to get them to school, right? But once they're, yes, but once they're at school, we can use, excuse me, school buses. Thought you said at one point, we need, we need to use school buses to get them to school, but once they're here, we can go in a van.
Oh, yes.
Anywhere.
Yes. So transportation of student is codified law. So when you're transporting them to and from school, has to be on a yellow bus. It has to be on a yellow bus.
Whether regular size or any.
It doesn't matter. Yellow, yellow bus, as long as it's yellow. It doesn't matter if it's 15 or if it's 75. You're right. That has to be, that's codified law. But we can transport kids. Let's say the golf team is going. Then for whatever reason, you could put them in just about any vehicle and take them where you need to do. Now, the caveat to that is, is that you're supposed to still abide by all the traffic laws that apply to a school bus. So if I'm driving a seven passenger van and I come to a railroad crossing, typically that school van, I'm supposed to bring that to a dead halt, put the flashers on, open the door, roll down the window to make sure there's no train coming. But do we do that? No. But if a highway patrolman ever caught ya, I mean, he'd have ya if he wanted to, but they don't enforce it. So.
And then a minibus, you would still need a CDL, correct?
15 passenger or less you do not.
Even if it's a yellow bus?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. But there's, it's, it's a good, it's a, certainly an idea to vet, you know, and the thing I'd say about that is, is it less than the number of routes, less than the number of kids? Because the cost savings in that, is it viable? You're going to save any mileage? I don't know. One would have to do a study. I could drive that route, pick a route and I can drive 65 passenger or 15 passenger and the fuel is probably going to be within reasons of just about the same. There's not going to be a whole lot of cost difference. But if you're talking about people who can drive it, then it opens up a whole lot, lot more for people who don't have to go get a CDL that can play a part in that.
But you're still going to pay them the same because the time is still the same.
Pay them the same, but at least you could find people.
Yeah.
I don't want to do it. So you're hard to twist someone's arm to do it. So you got more, more arms to twist.
Absolutely. I'm all for that. So, and there is some, a little bit of cost savings just because you can find a lot more of the 15 less passenger CD, non-CDL buses than you can the larger ones. And because there's a plethora of them, you can get them a little bit cheaper as well. So.
So continue serious investigation. But for tonight, go ahead and.
Approve that con, we need the contract. And it's at 1760, not 17.
Accept a motion to accept the contract from KND Bussing.
So move by Sean Felder. Second by Turner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side.
Okay, we will move on to item C, approve school board election results.
Craig has exact motions on that, but we did some investigation because in our experiences, which years wise, we got plenty underneath of us experience having school board elections. We have very little between me and him. Nonetheless, everything was done protocol. We made sure we followed codified law on that. The count, the total count, the ladies that did it for us went through it. It was a four count difference, 110 or 110 to 106, Craig, I mean.
Yeah, 110 to 106, 216 total votes.
110 for Mr. Roth, 106 for Jill. And that falls within the parameters. I believe it's 2%. Was it 2%? Yeah. Or less for recount. And we presented that to Jill, who's not feeling well tonight. And she pretty much told me, I don't have any intentions of, you know, filing any petition for a recount. But after you do this tonight, she technically still has five days to submit a petition or a request to have a recount done. So like I said, I don't foresee her doing that, but that option is still available to her. Other than that, it's just a motion per se.
Yeah, we got a motion here and then I have to have you guys sign this canvas sheet here that shows the 110 votes to 106. And it's just saying that we, John Pearl, Matt Leischer, Scott Turner and Jen Schonfelder, appointed as the board of canvassers because of our positions on the governing board in the jurisdiction of the Parkinson School District. 33-3 for the school board election held on the 8th day of April 2025. hereby certify that the foregoing is a true abstract of the votes cast in the jurisdiction of the Parkinson School District at the election as shown by the return certified to the person in charge of the election. And that was this, by those ladies. So, but in the motion also, we needed to list the number of registered voters. So.
2051.
Yep, 2051 was that. The number of registered voters for the school district who voted in the election was 216 and the percentage of the registered voters of the school district who voted in the election was 10.53%. And for the three-year term, Andrew Routh received 110 votes and Jill Lebo received 106 votes. Andrew Routh will fill the vacant three-year term on the board. So I need a motion to approve that and then I'll need to have you four sign this here. So move. Move by Sean Felder and a second by Leischer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Nope, nope, it doesn't. It's just all four of you have to sign it.
Andrew, you're actually officially seated at the July meeting.
July meeting.
So there's two July meetings. They all happen the same night. You end up first July ending business. And then once that's ended, five minutes later, you reestablish, reconvene with the new board and go through the reorganization process. And so that's when you would take over at that deal. So that's how that works.
Okay, that's all we have. We will have a short recess, clear the room and move to executive session.